I'd like to call the village council regular meeting to order February 11th, 2020 at 6:43 PM, a village hall. I need a motion from someone.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that I'd like Mayor Pro Tem Kim Vandenberg to conduct the meeting in lieu of Mayor Joe Polino's illness.
Further discussion? All's in favor? Okay, motion passes. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. I need to move under consent agenda number six and seven to unfinished business. We've got a couple of minor changes to that that we just need to talk about before we can approve it.
Six and seven.
Six and seven. And then if we can hold until the work session F, number two.
Oh, F two?
Uh huh. I was still waiting for some additional information. I'm gonna wait for the mayor to get back. And that's all the changes I have. Do you have anything else?
No.
Alright, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda for February 11th, 2020 as adopted. As amended, excuse me, as adopted.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Can I vote?
You can.
Okay, next up, pledge allegiance. I believe we have a lovely Boy Scout troop here to lead us in that. If you guys want to introduce yourselves.
Alright, everyone, please rise. We're troop 101, and we're going to be reading the flag of scout salute. Put your right hand over your heart. Do not recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yep, and sorry, we do not have any of the outgoing council members here, so we are just gonna table number four. Thank you. Okay, so next up is public comment. We have two signups. One is for public comment and one is for the public hearing, public comment. So if anybody signed up on public comment but actually wants to be under the public hearing, just let me know when I get to you, okay? During public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name, your address. We will not respond to you, but we will get back with you at a later time. It's one of our rules that we don't engage. So if you can be respectful and listen to everyone, that would be great. So first up, Mike Gilboy, who is probably outside waiting for people to... Yep, thank you, Mr. James.
Here comes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor Pro Tem, village council staff members. I'm Mike Gilboy of 126 Stoner Slade in Wyndham Hall. I'm the HOA president of our neighborhood. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of my neighborhood. Joe Carr Road and Marvin School Road are major concerns for our residents. The speed and aggressiveness that people drive on these roads make it very unsafe for my neighbors to feel safe entering and exiting these roads on both foot and in their vehicles. Joe Carr Road has no crosswalks, no lights, very few turn lanes, and drivers regularly drive over at a 60 miles an hour. Joe Carr Road even has a passing zone in front of Don Carr's Farm, which just last week I witnessed some use at 5:15 PM so they'd save 10 seconds as they turned into Marvin Creek. The roads have become so unsafe that if you drive the speed limit, drivers will tailgate, honk, and even pass you. Our neighborhood is in favor of any and all measures to make these roads safer. The results of the most recent village survey, residents made it clear that they wanted greenways and walking trails. That is great, but the residents of our neighborhood as well as other neighborhoods can't safely get to the ones we currently have. All the HOA presidents whose neighborhoods are affected by Joe Carr Road have talked and are willing to work with the village as well as NC DOT to improve the road from this speedway cut through that it currently is to a safe village road that our residents can safely use. The safety of our residents should be the number one priority of this village. My neighbors have asked me not to stop on this issue until it is safely resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up, Jennifer Barber.
Good evening, council. I'm Jennifer Barber. I reside at 629 Akamatics Drive. Thank you for allowing me the moment to speak tonight. I'm here to express my concern about the speeding issue of Joe Carr Road as well. My family has lived in Bridle Pass, Wyndham Hall since June 2007, and one of the benefits of moving to Marvin was the accessibility of greenways and the walkability of our neighborhoods looking to get off of Joe Carr. Over the last 13 years, we've watched the volume of traffic increase as well as the number of speeders. The speeding and use of Joe Carr's cut through substantially increased when it was used as an alternate route during the roundabout construction in New County Marvin School. And the increase in traffic has not slowed since that time as many from the area discovered the convenience of using Joe Carr as a shortcut. I realize that Joe Carr is not only the... Not the only road where speeding is an issue in western Union County, but my greatest concern is that Joe Carr has more pedestrian traffic than any other street in the Village of Marvin. I cross Joe Carr several times every day to walk my dogs or take my children out on their bikes, and I can attest how dangerous it is to cross Joe Carr at any time of day. Joe Carr is more of a neighborhood street where families and individuals exercise and enjoy the outdoors along the Greenway Pass in our neighborhoods. Crossing Joe Carr is becoming more difficult by the day as traffic increases. Several cars create blind spots, and the hill coming from Marvin School presents a challenge if you are a pedestrian or cyclist who is trying to cross between neighborhoods. Patroling Joe Carr has failed to deter speeders. When Deputy Swan was assigned to our area, he took an active role in patrolling Joe Carr. I spoke with him several times about the speeding on Joe Carr, and he was frustrated due to the lack of resources from the county in patrolling our roads, but he was equally frustrated by the fact that speeding tickets issued in our area aren't a big deal because people can easily afford them. In one of my last conversations with him before he was reassigned, he shared with me that he regularly caught people driving in excess of 55 miles per hour on Joe Carr. But he also said that he has caught several going over 70. He told me that it will take pedestrian death before Joe Carr ever receives the attention it needs. Installing crosswalks fails to slow down motorists, even though pedestrians have to ride away according to North Carolina law. As a community, we need to implement an action plan to ensure the safety of residents from Bridle Path, Wyndham Pond, Canterfield Creek, and Marvin Creek to cross Joe Carr. In my opinion, we have two options: speed humps placed before each intersection or four-way stops at each intersection. Emergency services prefer not to have speed humps. As it slows response time, I am in favor of four-way stops at all three intersections, including Wheatfield, Grove Edge, Akamatics, and Autumn Awesome. The four-way stops will be a deterrent against speeders using Joe Carr as a cut through, and it will force drivers to heed the pedestrian traffic that crosses the street on a regular basis. I admit, I don't look forward to having to stop three times before I reach my neighborhood, but if it ensures the safety of my family and my neighbors because drivers will be forced to slow down and pay attention to pedestrian traffic, then I think we can all live with that small inconvenience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone has a written statement that they'd like to submit for the record, just leave it on the corner here. Sorry, it says at the beginning. Alright, next up is Frank, is it Rockman?
Hi, I want to know, is there any plans to build a dog park in Marvin, and what can young people do to help?
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Kathy Hitcho.
Yes, I'm Kathy Hitcho. I live in the Tullamore subdivision of Tom Short Road. I came here this evening to say welcome to our new council members. Thank you for your service. Tonight, under new business, you are going to award the contract to Blue Ridge Trail Works for the construction of Tullamore Trail Phase Two. Our HOA president told me she was reassured by the village employees that this is merely a formality this evening. It's been in the works for over two years. I just want our new councilman to know so there is no hesitation to pass this with approval, a bit of our history. Our neighborhood is the only one in Marvin that has to pay to maintain lavish landscaping on a public road, the middle of the road and the opposite side of our subdivision entrance. Our builder was forced to sign this obligation for the HOA before they could obtain a building permit. We have no amenities in our subdivision other than the greenway trails which were advertised by our builder and on the Marvin Greenway maps. I have paid thousands of dollars to maintain a public roadway. Now it's your turn to complete Phase Two. I thank you for your consideration of this most important addition this year to our subdivision, and thank all those who have facilitated this coming achievement. For the application, what we have now is a gravel parking lot at the entrance of our subdivision and a very short Phase One trail. Phase Two will connect and extend our trail to the concrete walkway that was installed by our builder six years ago. You can walk across the track and continue on the concrete path that exists at our pocket park entrance. This will make a nice circle to walk, and then you can continue down the main street and get back to the parking lot. I just wanted you to be sure that you know that this is gonna... This does make a complete circle. And to add to it, since I think I have one minute left, is that it's a very nice walk in the woods when it's hot out. My husband, who's 75, walks our family dog every day at noon, and we are most grateful for what's been done, and we look forward to you passing the funding tonight. Thank you so much.
Alright. Tiffany Chekel.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Chekel from 1221 Lark Bridge Court in the Farms of Meadowlark.
Alright, we can give ladies.
Alright, at the Farms of Meadowlark, which is right over here on the... Where the new roundabout is going in. And for years, the parcels on either side of our private road have been a concern. We wanted to make sure they were developed sensibly and according to Marvin ordinances. We've had a rocky history with development proposals for Mr. Odell's property, many proposing high density and the takeover of our private road. We've never been presented a plan for development that adhered to the ordinance and preserved our road until recently. With the addition of the impending roundabout, Mr. Odell was able to submit a plan to council for the Woodlands, a rural subdivision, which the Meadowlark HOA board members support. It is the best case scenario for our neighborhood, only two lots border Mark Meadowlark Lane. There's a conservation setback for our road, and traffic and safety concerns are relieved by the roundabout. I was prepared to come here tonight to support plans for the Woodlands development. That is until the council went into closed session late Friday to discuss potentially wanting to locate the new village hall on Lot One of the Woodlands. It's ludicrous to me that anyone would want to buy and build a multimillion dollar home in a rural subdivision with a municipal building in the middle of it. Completely changes the definition of a rural subdivision and brings additional traffic, potentially a paved parking lot, lighting, et cetera, into the mix. I cannot support the Woodlands proposal if the village hall is part of that development. Regarding the council's role in this, I have three requests. Include addresses on the agendas. I know you've been doing a lot of work on your code of conduct. Please make it a rule that addresses be included with parcel numbers on your agendas. I only found out about the closed session and what lots were under discussion by reading the agenda for Friday's retreat, which contained only parcel numbers, then going to Union County's Go Maps website to look up each parcel number individually. Your house was on there too. The optics of how this went down are terrible. It appears that the true intent is varied in closed sessions and scare parcel numbers and secrecy. I doubt any of us would recognize our own parcel by its number. We know street addresses. I propose that in parentheses next each parcel number on the agenda, the street address be included. The average citizen should not have to know... Should be able to know what's gonna be discussed at a meeting at a glance without having to individually research each parcel number on the agenda. Second, finalize the land use plan. Before any other decisions are made about the land that falls inside or contiguous to the potential downtown overlay district, there must be alignment on a land use plan. Spend 10 years, two resident surveys, it's time to get it done. And third, build the village hall on the lot that the village already owns. The four acre lot at the corner of Newtown and Marvin School Roads was given to the village with the intent of it being a site for the new village hall. In 2019, the council spent thousands on architects, engineers, and experts. We have existing site and building plans and budget for it. If bids came in high, find a way to make it work with our current resources. I'm sure there's an equitable solution there: phased approach, reworking of our 2020 budget allocations, et cetera. Stop wasting time looking into existing houses to outfit lots on new developments. Work with what we already have. My other concern is that the council... Why is the council looking at other sites? What would happen to that four acre lot if it wasn't used for village hall? Why... What are the council's plans for that lot if not a village hall? As a resident, I wonder why so much energy is going into looking at other sites? Okay, thank you, Tiffany.
Alright, David Williams.
Good evening, Village of Marvin, citizens and council. My name is David Williams. I'm one of three candidates for the Union County Board of Commissioners. Again, good evening. I'll keep my comments relatively brief, and I wouldn't presume to come here and give you a stump speech, so I won't. Instead, I'll just tell you a little bit about myself and hopefully extend you an invitation to engage in a conversation about the future of Union County. I am a attorney in Indian Trail where I live with my wife Emily, and we have two sons, Connor and Noah, who are in Union County Public Schools at Sun Valley High School. I also have a daughter who is a freshman at North Carolina State University. I encourage you to check out my website and also my Facebook page. My website is citizensforwilliams.com. Facebook page is @citizensforwilliams. Again, I won't give a stump speech, but I would like to just kind of highlight some of the issues that I'm bringing into sharper focus. I hope some of these will resonate with many of you. One is my views on high density development and ways that we might curtail that, and certainly not subsidize it along two-lane corridors. My views on sensible ETJ, exoterritorial jurisdiction. I also write about and speak about the views... My views on the water rates, the 33% hike in water rates, and also the Yadkin Water Project. There are a number of other positions that I cover on my website and Facebook page. Again, I won't belabor them here, but I do invite all of you to engage me in conversation. My cellphone number is 980-328-4408. I'm sincere about accepting calls from anybody and engaging in a conversation over the phone. I'd be happy to meet in person. And just again, look forward to hopefully engaging in some meaningful conversations about the future of Union County and also the Village of Marvin. Thank you very much for your consideration, and it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe that is the end of public comment. Did anybody miss the sign up? Next up is reports and updates. First up is administrative report, Christina.
Thank you. So just one thing I wanted to report, and this actually applies to some people that are in the audience here tonight. I'm not sure where Mike Gilboy is.
He's outside.
Is he outside?
He's right out.
Can you grab Mike Gilboy so you can hear?
Mike? Mike? Mike Gilboy?
He's gone.
Okay, so anyone listening on the audio tonight, we have actually consulted with our contract engineers, AMT, to look at a traffic analysis on Joe Carr, to put in some traffic calming devices through consultation with NC DOT. Those are NC DOT roads. So anything that we do to those roads, we'd have to have their permission. It is something that we take serious and that we are currently assessing, and we'll continue to do so until we feel like we have a resolution to the issue as well. So that's the only thing I have to report. We had a great retreat last weekend, last Friday, I should say, to prepare us for the upcoming budget year, and we still have some meetings to go. So other than that, we've been busy and diligently working.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Next up is planners report. Right ahead.
Alright, thanks. I have a couple of things on the planners report. One is that it kind of occurred to us here that we distributed the survey results to you guys, but we didn't spend some time actually discussing them, so I wanted to kind of ask if you would not mind putting a discussion of survey results, something of that effect, on the next work session.
Yes.
So we can talk about, you know, the impacts and, you know, basically all the questions.
I think that would be great.
Great. The other thing is that similar to the Marvin Gardens, we did finally get some word back from the people that are rezoning... Applying to rezone the corner of Bond's Grove Church. And confidence they're looking into having a pre-application meeting with the council, and I gave them the options of having a special meeting or coming to the work session like the people from Marvin Gardens, and they would prefer to have their pre-application meeting at the work session. So would you like to put that on the work session agenda for them to present there as well?
Nope. I think that'd be good.
I agree.
Okay, great. Those are my reports. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right ahead. Next up is report, Christina, you pretty much just... Yeah, I just... Okay. Next up is deputy report. I don't think we...
I don't really have much. I think there was like half as many wrecks in January, eight wrecks versus like 16 the month before. Eight's still way too many, but this is half the number it was before. We had like five RVVs, unlocked vehicles. People going around checking doors at night, that kind of thing, and there was like 29 traffic stops. That's about it. Nothing else really happened.
Deputy, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Last council meeting, I remember hearing on the news that it was somebody, I guess it was from Ecklinburg, had been given 42 months for stealing mail from people's mailboxes, especially from affluent neighborhoods, which included ours. Do you know if that had anything to that effect? Because we had that going on for...
No, I didn't hear anything about that.
Six... Okay. I didn't know if it was... Cool.
Next up is the planning board chair report. Mr. J.
Nothing, you know, in addition to anything that's related to...
Okay, and we're working on the... Plan juice?
Yes.
Should be approved hopefully by the summer?
That's the timeline.
That's the timeline?
It's gonna be back and forth between planning board and council, so...
Yeah, we're very close to, you know, to the end or presenting it then to the council. And then there'll be some evidently, probably some back and forth.
Okay, we're good. Alright, thank you. Next up is park checking greenway. Derek, do you have anything which you want to add for park checking the greenway?
No.
Mostly?
Everything else will come up later.
Alright, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I make a motion to approve the January 2020 tax refunds.
Nope, just the whole thing. Just do that.
Consent.
Just say, you can just say, "so moved."
So moved. Thank you.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Next up is going to be the public hearing, D. It is, number one, hold a public hearing to consider rural subdivision application number 19-12311, the Woodlands. So we need a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open up the public hearing for consider the rural subdivision application 19-12311, the Woodlands.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no one signed up for the public hearing? Nope. Okay. So we need a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a... Go ahead. I make a motion to close the public hearing on the consider the rural subdivision application 19-12311, the Woodlands.
Further discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Alright, so, right ahead.
Sure.
Yep.
Give me one second. Can you have Barbie have to switch places?
Well, we only have one live talk, so we have to share.
Alright, might as well open it up while I'm setting this up. Today, we have for your consideration the preliminary construction plan of Russell Odell's proposed subdivision, the Woodlands. He's proposing a rural subdivision, which by our ordinances is eight lots max, one road, two to two and a half acre minimum. And by those standards, the tract and the proposed site plan is compliant. Can't think of talk at the same time. So, pack of docs. There's a question. Alright.
Got it?
Alright, so here is the site as it's proposed. There's, here you can see eight lots. It's at the corner of Meadowlark, Newtown Road, and they've incorporated the roundabout design. Mr. Odell has been in communication with NC DOT, make sure that he has their most current plans and that they have his, so that there's been close communication. Let's see. Let's go through it a bit. The lots, as I said, in a rural subdivision, half has to be at least two acres, the other half at least two and a half, but he has exceeded that. More than half are more than two and a half acres. He's proposing that there will be septic. There's an opportunity to tie into a sewer extension that's happened more recently or has been discussed more recently. And there's also the conversation of whether they'll have wells or a waterline extension. That's also something that can be decided later in the engineering review phase, depending on how they finalize that. Another factor of this subdivision is that it was proposed without sidewalk. There's been a precedent that we approved a subdivision without sidewalk, but the road was never accepted by Marvin. Currently, there's no standard for a road without sidewalk, so if they were to go ahead with this, it could be approved, but it would not be... It could not be accepted into our maintenance network until... And I have the memo list of the options for them, which would be either to, at their cost, add a typical section for a rural road without a sidewalk, or not have the sidewalk and not have us accept it. That's not a desirable option. Or lastly, to revise this plan to add a sidewalk. But that also could be... This could be approved without a sidewalk, and then one of those options can happen later as... This is a preliminary construction plan, and it's meant to approve the general idea of the subdivision. I guess now is a good time to talk about the Lot One Village Hall. Honestly, this is one of the reasons why we have these things in closed session before there's an agreement reached, but this was on the closed session docket for the Friday's retreat. It was not really considered as much as the other options, and the request is that... What is gonna happen is that this subdivision is not considered in tandem with the potential location of village hall on that site. That's not what is going to be happening today. The rest of this is storm drainage. So as they have it, it's a ditch type road with storm drainage coming out at the end, one pipe coming across underneath the front of the road. Being a rural subdivision, they don't have the developed acreage to require stormwater detention. acreage to require stormwater detention. And I think that's about it. That's all I have to say. Um, is there...
Rohit, we were talking about, we were talking about some of the, um, different options of the, we had to put in some stormwater and some new drainage, or there were some options around that? Is that noted in here?
The, you mean the storm drainage or...
The water.
Water extension. That's not, that's not depicted in here.
Okay.
Um, it could be added later, um, as a, as a separate sheet, but, uh, let's see.
So Rohit, while you're looking at that, um, there were some additional questions and some concerns. Lot one has not been, to my knowledge, is not being considered for Village Hall, just so you guys know that. It is, we, that was not part of the discussion in closed session. So now, could it ever be? Probably not, because I don't think we wanna pay the money that Mr. Odell wants for that, but I would never say never to anything, but that was not what was being discussed in closed session for lot number one. That was part of the economic development for some other stuff that the village can do. So, just...
This stuff, well, I don't know who sent you an email.
So the one reason why, yeah, I sent this, I really shouldn't have been talking about closed session in email, but one of, this lot was briefly on the table, and that's why it was on the, it's one of the reasons why it was on the closed session, a list of parcels, but, you know, at the closed session, this didn't even make a dent in the discussion.
Yeah, I, it was not on the table for Village Hall, for me, for Mr. Lyons, for Mr. Mark Lewis, or for Mayor Polino, so...
I have the second copy. It's already in there.
And Mayor Purcell, really what you have to look at legally here is the subdivision requirements, uh, and whether this meets the requirements of your subdivision ordinance. I get the public's concerns, and those are duly noted, but really that's about future uses, and this is whether or not, uh, the subdivision complies with your ordinance and the conditions.
So, specifically where we, there are, there are several, there are a few that are out of, outside of...
There should be like a page number on each one.
So the new road is coming off Meadowlark Lane?
That's right. Specifically, uh, the realigned portion would put the access point within, um, Mr. Odell's current property. The dashed line is the edge of the property.
And so the new sewer line would be going in?
Um, the discussion, they're septic on this plan, um, but the sewer line, since Newtown Road is a ridge, they would require, uh, individual pumps, um, from each lot, but they could be tied into, um, where the sewer line is being extended to Mr. Philbrick's house at the corner.
Okay, but right now it's on septic?
Right now, the plan is for septic.
I remember being at the, Rohit, at the planning board meeting, what, what was the timeline on this? Because I think, um, it, this would happen after the roundabout went in, and the roundabout's been delayed, so...
Yes, it would have to be at least concurrent, if not after.
Okay.
And so that would put this being developed.
And the roundabout, we're talking about August two thousand twenty-one?
That's correct. For people who are surprised in the audience, this NC DOT has had to divert funding from current projects to, uh, help with Hurricane Florence, um, disaster relief.
Okay, so walk me through the sidewalk situation.
So the sidewalk is that, so they propose the subdivision for the road without a sidewalk, and while we do have precedence for one neighborhood in Marvin being approved without a sidewalk, um, that road, that was three pond acres, it was not accepted into Marvin's, um, maintenance network, as we don't have a standard in our, um, specs manual for a road without a sidewalk. So the options here are for the applicant to do the same, where they would not, you know, they would build a road as is and not have it accepted into our maintenance system, or, um, probably the more desirable option is to, um, pursue, as, as I said, at their cost, adding a typical section for a road with a sidewalk in a rural subdivision. And then it would be accepted.
Rohit, would that, would that, um, would that change? Because I know we had some issues with the lot sizes. Did that change any of that?
It could change the lot sizes, but, um, in many cases, the sidewalk is on the lot, and the lot goes up to the curb. So, um, they could have a sidewalk easement. The sidewalk would be on their lot and not change the lot sizes.
Okay. And are they aware of the options?
They are. I've sent them the staff report, the same as I sent to you.
Okay. Have they made any kind of indication as to what their preference is, or what they're looking at possibly doing? Or they're just waiting on us?
That's a question for applicant, I think, because I, I don't know what he's thinking in that regard.
So what do our ordinance say? That we have to have a sidewalk? Because I mean, there are other neighborhoods besides three pond acres that don't have a sidewalk.
There are neighborhoods, but all the neighborhoods that were, that don't have a sidewalk were before Marvin, uh, was incorporated. All the new neighborhoods other than three pond acres have a sidewalk on at least one side of the road.
Innisbrook doesn't.
Innisbrook doesn't? You're saying? So, but when was that built?
After it was incorporated.
Okay. And I have, it might be the, it might have to do with the dates of, uh, when the ordinance was written. Um, Innis, Innisbrook's not in our maintenance network yet.
No.
No, it's not. Okay. So then we might have to have a similar discussion then. Or we could see if, well, add a typical section at that time, too.
So right now, our ordinance says when you build a new neighborhood, regardless of its rule or not, it has to have a sidewalk?
No, a major subdivision only has to have a sidewalk.
Okay, so a rural subdivision does not?
Right.
What defines a major subdivision?
Um, a major subdivision is pretty much anything, um, that's not qualified as a minor or older subdivision.
Great answer. That's a great answer. I had that information.
No, that's, that's actually what we discussed.
It, it is oddly worded, and your ordinance has been pieced together through years.
Yep.
Because you have a subdivision ordinance that uses minor and major most of the time, and then I think this one got thrown in later, and it's not clear.
Rural subdivision matters.
Yeah, it got thrown in at a later date. And then you have your, um, general zoning ordinance, and it uses terminology of, um, large and small track.
Anyhow.
So it leaves kind of some confusion.
It's very ambiguous.
It's ambiguous.
Does it really just come down to the aesthetics? I mean, how the neighborhood would look with or without? Does it really come down to that?
Yes and no, um, because it's not just aesthetics. Rural subdivision has a definition.
Right.
If it meets these five bullet point criteria, then it can be qualified as a rural subdivision. Same for minor.
Right.
Um, I won't go through them right now, but you do have the qualifications for a rural subdivision in your memo. Um, so basically, if it can meet those criteria, then it can qualify as that rural subdivision, which in this case it does.
And that's an eight lot cap on the rural, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct. Eight lots.
Some of your neighborhoods are gonna be more than eight lots, and those are gonna be major, and they're all gonna mandate sidewalks clearly, because a major's, a major is defined in your UDOs as a major shall have. Here, you've got this third classification, and it kind of muddles the water a little bit.
Okay.
So this is the...
But your, your zoning administrators looked at that and made the interpretation?
They had a long time of research, but, uh, essentially, this is our, um, first, uh, real application for a rural subdivision, where, um, the rural subdivision ordinance was, uh, designed to be able to create a subdivision like three pond acres. And so, so that one was not a rural subdivision, but now that we have it in our ordinance, this is the first application for a rural subdivision.
So are there plans to keep the road public or private?
The, the, the plot says public.
Okay.
Says village or Marvin maintain, but as I said, we need to add a spec for no sidewalk street, or they need to add a sidewalk.
Okay, and this is preliminary, so do we need to make a decision on the sidewalk tonight?
Uh, no, we can, they're after, in, in any construction, preliminary construction plan, you can approve it, and then there's a phase where the engineer will review it and make their comments, and then provide them to the applicant, and you don't have to come back and review it until the final plan.
So then what is our final action tonight? What is our action tonight with this?
You can approve, approve with modifications or deny this application.
Okay.
Or with conditions, right, Chaplain?
Yeah, but if you were to want the sidewalk, I would discuss that with the applicant now and provide that instruction. Maybe you'd probably do it through the process, but I think once you've approved it, it's harder to get it. If you are considering, uh, taking in this road, or the other option is, we don't have all the pieces, uh, the way that UDO has gotten amended. You would have to change your UDO to allow, in these unique situations with a, uh, with the neighborhood touches this with eight lots, it can be different. And that's why you ought to allow it to side, without a sidewalk, but I think y'all need some clarification, one way or the other.
I would agree. Um, I think we just, we need to have kind of an idea of where, what they wanna do.
Yeah. I mean, my...
Because it's a pretty, at this point, it's a pretty clear, um, either or. You know, it's either put a sidewalk in and know that there's the opportunity to come in to the village, or not, and then they maintain, they have, they maintain the roads. So, and I think we just need to have that discussion to see where they stand with that.
Okay. And Chaplain, you recommend doing that now?
I think it's just, it may be uncomfortable, but at least open up the discussion. And, uh, and you gotta look at, if this is a private road, you're gonna have those eight people that are paying for it, and they'll never be able to come in unless you agree to modify y'all's plans. But people generally want their roads to come in.
Yeah.
And if it's not compliant, y'all need to decide how y'all want that going forward, if y'all want sidewalks, or, these are unique. Uh, there are basically four lots on each side. They can't get too big because of the definition of eight lots. You can make a determination that that's okay. Big neighborhood, you want sidewalks smaller, where there's only gonna be three or four lots on one side, it's a cul-de-sac, you can differentiate, and I think that's within your prerogative.
Is there a way to, is there a way to table this? Because there's, there's financial implications to it, too. I mean, if I'm, if I'm the developer, I'm sitting here looking and going, I, I would love to say yes on sidewalks, however, you know, sidewalks just went up by twenty percent, you know, you know, whatever that cost may be. So that's, you know, I don't know that they would be prepared unless it's something they've already, they've already either A budgeted for, or they've already looked into. So I don't know if there's a way to, to table discussion.
Yeah, the applicant's here, and let's, I think right up here from the amber, we could have it, um, maybe conditioned upon sidewalk at a future date, but they're gonna wanna try to get approval, I'm sure.
Okay.
To move forward, and they can tell you that, and how important the sidewalk issue is, but I think that may be the only way to handle it.
Yeah, let's, let's ask Mr. Odell.
We didn't learn about the sidewalk options till about two weeks ago, something like that. So we haven't had a chance to meet as a group, and we discussed it, Brian and I, Brian's the, our designer, man, architect, engineer, and I was trying to get, what is the cost?
Right.
What is the cost? Um, and, uh, I don't have a strong preference one way or the other. I'd like to see the costs. And, um, I guess my question was, could we say we'll have it, uh, with a sidewalk? And if we don't, would we just come to a different meeting and say we need to change it? Or, I mean, that's...
I don't, again, I don't know the, the exact procedure to go along with this, but my, my thought would be, and that's why I said table, to allow them time to, to go back and get that information, so that neither one of us are stepping out of line.
Right.
To, you know, because, because we don't wanna go back and try to unscramble the egg. It's, it's, then it's, you know, are we creating more of a problem than we are? I understand that y'all wanna do this sooner than later and get this, get this approved, but how, you know, how quickly can, or is there a process to, A, is there a process to table it, and then put it on the, the next work session? And, and then have, you know, we could share, come back to the table again, share each other's thoughts and, and ideas on it, because you could come back and go, whoa, sidewalk, out of question. Does that, does that make sense?
You can most definitely table it. Uh, you could approve it with the, a sidewalk and with the stipulation that they could come back before, uh, with the modification. You could have it with a, a staff, uh, review and modification without a sidewalk. That's given a lot of discretion and pressure on staff. Table it or approve it with, with, and they could come back, however they wanna do that.
I don't think that two weeks is enough time for you guys to figure it out, if, and, and two, I don't wanna make this kind of decision that the public is clearly very interested in during a work session that's in the morning. I'd rather have that at a regular, uh, meeting, so that the public can be here to hear that, and it's more available in the evenings. I understand that.
Yeah, obviously, I have a difficulty, because I have to, I live in Raleigh, so every time I have to do this, like, I gotta come here and I gotta pay someone to come here with me. So it's, it's, it's up our cost every time I have to come to a meeting. We thought it'd be approved tonight. That's what we were told. So, but I guess the quick question is, um, does staff care one way or another? And if not, why not approve it A or B? I mean, that's, does, is, does anybody here in, in the public say, we really want a sidewalk? Or if it's not, you're gonna have, maintain the streets yourselves? I mean, does it matter to anybody here?
I mean, it, it matters in terms of our ordinance, is I wanna make sure that we're following them and doing, and it sounds like it's pretty unclear. So, I mean, if, I mean, my gut is sidewalks. Put, put the sidewalks in. Um, and that's, you know, even though it's a rural subdivision, you know, we're trying to get walkability and connectability, and to me, it would make the most sense to go ahead and put the sidewalks in, but...
So posing his question is that we approve it with...
With sidewalks.
With sidewalks. Or is that, am I, I wanna make sure that you're hearing as well. So then, kind of what is being put forth is that we approve it with the sidewalk, and if it needed to be, if it needed to be amended, we can, can we then...
They can come back before, they can request an amendment, and you can even put that in your motion to come back before, uh, this council.
I'm good with that. Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I mean, I, I don't want him running back and forth to, to Raleigh, and, and I think that's where they would like to go. I think that's what you're, what I heard you say, Jess, what you would like to go.
Again, we're trying to confirm some pricing, and he's got more experience than me, and I, and I think we can work it in. And so, um, and we're not talking a whole lot, because I don't think you run all the way around the cul-de-sac if you stop before then, right? So, um, I, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Approve it with sidewalk, and then if we want something else, we just come back.
Okay. So...
I'm sorry. And do y'all want flexibility to have this?
I don't, I don't know what you're pointing out.
Um, I was just trying to think of a way, if, if this board decided with the rural that they didn't want the sidewalk. Um, I was just trying to think of a way, if, if this board decided with the rule that they didn't want the sidewalk. Uh, if you wanted some flexibility there as well, but it's probably cleaner just to do it the way we have, have an approval with the sidewalk and, um, and this can come back for an amendment, the request.
I think that gives, I think that gives the, the firmest ground, both sides to have the firmest ground to stand on.
Well, it, it gives you, the sidewalk is in and then if you decide to, uh, relinquish that, you can at a later date. It's harder to approve it without an assort later.
Right.
Relinquish, I would, i- i- if you wanna approve it, make a motion to approve subject to, um, amended plans with a, um, with a sidewalk.
Okay, but now is there further, um, but we still have, still public, so we have further discussion?
If we wanna talk about it some more, we can, or somebody can make a motion to approve the preliminary, um, subdivision with bullet number three, which is build, build the road with a sidewalk. Now go into.
Contingent order by the plans.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Build, build the road with a sidewalk, construction plan can be approved as presented, this change would be.
Okay, are we at a, are we at a point where we should go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Then.
Go ahead, you, you, you do it.
Then I make a motion to, uh,
Approve the plans.
Approve the, the plan, uh, the rural subdivision application, one nine dash one two three one one, the Woodlands.
Subject to amendment to the plans.
Amendment to the plans, build the road with a sidewalk, the construction plan can be approved or presented. As a change would be minor enough to revise, the construction plan will administrative approval.
Excellent. Further discussions?
No.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Village Hall, Christina. All right, F, unfinished business.
Um, so this is discussion and consideration of dates and times for, uh, council office hours. Um, we had discussed this in our work session that.
Wait, wait, we would move the consent agenda items to the front of unfinished business or the back?
I think it was the back.
Playing tight. Playing tight where people.
No, no, but they moved six and seven to unfinished business.
It's four and five.
It's four and five.
Just wait for everybody to get settled. All right, are we ready? All right, we can have it quiet, the audience, please. Um, we're at to F, unfinished business. Uh, number one is discussion and consideration of dates and times for council office hours. We talked about this in our work session, um, so that we could have council office hours or coffee with council so that Marvin residents could come in and chat with us so that we would have some office hours. Um, so Barbie put together some options, um, some in the morning, some in the evening. And then we just kinda need to see if these times and dates will work and then who wants to go where with who and everyone do that. Barbie, I like the idea of the different times and kinda how it's spread out. Um, so why don't we all look at this and when Mayor Pleno's hopefully feeling better and back, we can actually kinda pencil this in at the work session and then we can post it then. And then, uh, just, cause I mean, I don't really think it's like an approval thing, I think it's just kinda we're gonna start doing it, so then.
No, I think it was just a really a book brainstorming.
Barbie, you can do me a favor and do the, do the calendar through, um, the summer and send it out to.
Through.
Do, uh, no, through the summer, like through August?
August, yeah.
And then, um, send it out and then when we come back for our work session, we'll kind of have talked about it amongst ourselves and penciled this in and.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Okay, um, all right, two, we are ta, we tabled, so the new, three is now two. Um, consideration of date, time and location of joint meetings with planning board and PR and G boards. Um, Barbie, you found some dates for us?
I did, uh, for the planning board, it, um, the, um, the date that was best for everyone is five o'clock on March the night, which is a Monday. Banks Church is not available to us on Mondays. Um, so if, if you don't, if, if it's, if it's too many people to meet here at the Village Hall, then we'll have to come up with the, a location and, um, send out a notice, uh, as to, to, to change the location.
We have seven on the planning board, five on the council, so.
We're just gonna have to have this twelve.
Staffs.
It would be tight in here, but, but you would be able to do it. Because our capacity is 23 in this room.
I think we're, we're gonna have to have it here because our other options are, we're in there close on Monday, so.
Okay, and then the next thing is that, um, uh, council will have, uh, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim will have to, uh, call for a special meeting, um, for that.
Okay.
And that'll be a 48 hour notice.
Okay, can we do that early, like?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I, I, I can draft it and then, um,
Are you guys good with that date?
Yeah, it looks like everybody was, was good for that.
Yeah.
The only one, the only one on the planning board that would not be able to meet that day would be Michael LaBelle.
Okay, and that's at 5:00 PM you said?
It's 5:00 PM.
Okay, and, um.
And that's an hour meeting from 5:00 to 6:00.
Okay, and then, um, yeah, I go ahead and draft the thing and I can come in and sign it or not, we can call for it. And then Park Truck and Green Lane?
Um, that date was, um, 10 o'clock, well, you could do nine or 10 on March the 12th. Um, but Councilman Lynn said that, uh, 10 o'clock was a better time for him. So if you wanna get his, all of council together with, um, PR and G, then, uh, 10 o'clock on, on the 12th.
We should do it all at nine, then.
Well, he's not available till 10. John, stick up for you.
It is very possible that I could try and get, uh, Banks Church, but I, but there's, there's only like four people, five people on that. So I think they'd be comfortable here in, in the Village Hall.
So let's do, yeah, 10 AM on March the 12th.
Okay, and, um, and that would also be a special call meeting that both, both chairs would have to, the, have to call as well as council.
Can you let, um, Mary Seig know that we, that she needs to call for one and Mr. Jones, you can sign this?
Mr. Jones will have to do that for the planning board.
All right, are we good with those? Fantastic. Uh, next up is G, new business. Sorry. Discussion and consideration for approval of awarding the contract to Blue Ridge Trail Works in the amount of 10,000. What?
No.
You can say, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. Uh, sorry, okay, number six from the consent agenda, my apologies. Final plat for the minor subdivision. Yes, the final plat for the minor subdivision, it needs to, um, and we need to have approval for the final plat for minor subdivision application, number one nine dash one two three three five eight oh three B Woodland Forest, subject to deed restriction considerations, conditions.
Conditions.
Conditions, deed restriction conditions.
So the reason why this was pulled off of consent agenda is because we didn't explicitly, um, talk about this deed restriction as a condition in the, uh, work session, but, uh, I have to paperclip these one at a time, so give me one minute. But the, uh, the bolded statement, the first bolded statement on the, the back of page one, second page, it's a description that, uh, you know, part of the subdivision is being, uh, is the, part of the approval of the subdivision is that, um, that they are dedicating the cul-de-sac that's currently, uh, private to a public right of way, but it's unpaved. So, um, it's gonna be in their deed restriction that either they pave or that they pay for us to pave that cul-de-sac the next time, uh, Woodland Forest is up for repaving.
Okay, so we just need to do it. Subject to deed restriction condition?
Yeah, cause it's already been discussed.
Which is this here, okay. All right, so I need, um, a motion for final plat approval for minor subdivision application, one nine dash one two three three five eight oh three B Woodland Forest, subject to deed restriction condition.
So, so may.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that's approved, all right, and then, um, I guess that would now be number four. Um, so approve revisions to Rule 18 Action by Council and Rule 41 Appointments of Council's Rules of Procedure. Um, we had had this approved, um, or we, we had talked about it in the work session for how we make appointments, our own membership and other boards and committees.
Right.
The last point, E, it really needs to read, the council shall vote by motion to appoint nominee and not, it's pretty, it wasn't very clear whether it was by motion or by ballot, so it needs to be by motion. So the only thing that needs to change there is, um, is E, that the council shall vote by motion to appoint nominee.
Mayor Pro Tim, can, can I also suggest that, I was reading this, the second sentence is kind of redundant.
Rather than proceeding by motion, because we just said it there, take that out?
Take that out.
Okay, so we'll take that out, the rather than proceeding by motion, the council shall use the following procedures, so take that whole little paragraph out.
So we're gonna strike what's there for E and then replace it, since council shall vote by motion.
Correct.
And the duplicative sentence? Uh, that's already, they've already.
We're gonna take it out.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's okay.
So I need a motion to approve, um, Rule 18 Action by Council, Rule 41 Appointments as amended.
So may.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, all right, now new business, sorry about that. Yes. Yes, yes, so, um, I need a motion to recess for five minutes?
I'll make the motion to recess.
And to authorize you to execute.
And to authorize me to execute?
The subdivision plat in the mayor's absence.
Yeah.
And to authorize us.
To execute documents in the mayor's absence.
To execute documents in the mayor's absence.
That, yeah, that clarifies it, there's a rule that you get to conduct a meeting, but now you're signing something. And I think you already have that authority that the statute mentions the board can grant you that authority, so now there's no question.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So we're in recess for a couple minutes.